Hey, good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Gadsden City Council meeting here on November 25th. This time, I'd like to remind everyone, please make sure all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham?
President.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yeah.
Councilman Avery is absent today. Councilman Back?
Here.
Councilman Wilson?
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra?
Here.
And Councilman Robinson?
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Latham to lead the invocation. Please stand or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, today we come before you. We are grateful and we are thankful that you have afforded us one more day of life, health, and strength. We thank you, Lord God, for our being here today, and we just ask for your wisdom and your knowledge to do the things that you have assigned to our hands to do. We pray your continued blessings upon our city, upon our mayor, upon our council, and the constituents of this city. We thank you for what you've done, the things that you are doing, and we praise you most of all, Lord God, for the things that you are about to do. We have your faith to call those things that be not as though they were, Lord God, and so we thank you for the unity and the love, the progress of our city. We pray this prayer in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Works Committee work session and council meetings held on November 10th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the weeks of November 7th through the 13th and 14th through the 20th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Agenda Item 7 is reserved for proclamations, commendations, and recognition of guests. And this morning, we have some really special guests with us today. We have the Gadsden Pumas 12-and-under soccer team that has just completed an undefeated season, and I believe capping off with the state championship. And I'm going to invite Darrell Richardson to come up and if you'll tell us about the team a little bit more in depth, and then we'll get those guys to come up here in just a second. Let you introduce the coaches and the players, and very proud to have you all here today. Very proud of your team.
Good morning, good morning. Yes, the-
Is that green light on, Darrell?
Uh, I'm kind of tall, let me raise it up.
There you go.
Yes, good morning, good morning. Yes, the Gadsden City Pumas had an undefeated season this year. They beat every team that we had in our 12U Soccer League, and then they went and competed in the state all tournament, which we held here in Gadsden.
Yeah.
And they won the whole thing.
Man, that is great. Congratulations.
Yes.
Congratulations.
They're coached by Coach Rudy and Coach Rob. Raise your hand right there.
Coach, alright. Well, we'd love to have you come up, Coach, if you'd like to say something about your players, and then we want to get a picture. Wait a minute, now, I think I know you. No wonder y'all are the state champions. Look who your coach is. Man, what a great coach.
I just want to say, this is a group, a good group of kids. We came together, we've been together about four or five years, Rob. And hey, they're good kids, and every sport they play, straight A students, they be on the road. I just want to say, they just good conduct. The parenting's great with these kids, and we're just trying to install positive things with the kids.
Man, Rudy, thank you.
That's all I'm just saying. Thank you.
That's wonderful. Congratulations. If we could, if we could have the players come up and line up here, right in front of this dais right here, we'd like to get a picture.
Okay. Let's go, guys. Line up.
Alright.
It's going this way, guys.
Yeah, come right up here. That is good. You know some of these guys? Alright.
How about that sponsorship from Emirates Airlines?
Yeah. Any other coaches, come on up.
I just started sliding down.
Everybody will look right here. Count three. One, two, three. We get one more. One, two, three. Alright.
Let's give them another round of applause. Alright, great. Love the jerseys. That looks really good.
Rudy, thank you. This one yours.
Oh, man. Twins. I forgot about that. Oh, man, wait till I tell Allen. Always good to celebrate our young people and very proud of their hard work and accomplishments. It's not easy going undefeated in a season, no matter what you're playing. So that's exciting.
Well, and we were just talking last week about how many compliments we got from out-of-town guests about the Gadsden Sports Park over there. We received, I received several messages from folks from Mobile, Huntsville, all over, just talking about not only the quality of the facilities, which is a testament to our city engineer and the design work that went into that facility, but also to the management and operations, to the day-to-day operations over there. I got so many compliments and messages about that, but the icing on the cake is when that state tournament comes to town and then your home team wins it. You know, it doesn't get much better than that. We get to eat our cake and have it, too.
That's right. That's right. Our granddaughter played in that tournament, Darrell, and I got to talk with people from Troy and Fort Payne and Huntsville, and I think that may have been it, but they were all blown away by our facility and just how everything was conducted. And so, our hats are off to you at Public, at Parks and Rec, and then all of your employees. There was a lot. I saw golf carts riding around, taking people back and forth, and the place looked really nice. It was clean. All the comments that were told to me, people knew, word got around that I was on the city council, and they were coming up to me, thanking us and thanking the city and thanking Parks and Rec, and it was a proud moment. So, I was proud, proud for you guys. Thank you for what you're doing.
I think word might have got around because he was the only guy out there in a suit and tie on Sunday.
I had on my council hat or whatnot. Just kidding.
I will say, I would be remiss if I didn't just give one bit of feedback that I did get. Heath and Darrell, parking, parking.
Victim of our success, right?
A first-world problem, but I did get some feedback. We got to, don't we have a, is that still underway, Heath, the plans for that upper-level parking area? Are we still going to try to move forward with that?
Well, so the tennis complex is under design, and it will have some around it, and then the champions field, additional turf field will also have some additional parking, so there's still yet.
I got you. So we've got some additional, we're squeezing it in there everywhere we can, right? Good day.
Sounds good, alright. Any others from the administration that we need this morning? Don't want to miss anybody? Any special guests? Alright. We'll move on to Agenda Item 8, which at this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to recess the council meeting in order to conduct the work session.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to recess the council meeting, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries for the recess.
Okay. Alright. We're now at Agenda Item 9. The Chair will entertain a motion to reconvene the council meeting.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to reconvene the council meeting, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries for the reconvening.
Thank you. Item 10 is unfinished business. We have none today. Item 11 comes under first readings. This is an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 42, Emergency Services, Article 2, Alarm Systems. This removes references to fire alarms in this chapter, which will be moved to Chapter 50, excuse me, which will be moved to Chapter 50. The code sections referencing burglary alarm systems will remain in Chapter 42. This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Item 12 is an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 50, Fire Prevention and Protection. This will add Article 4, which is Fire Alarm Ordinance, to Chapter 50. The main purpose is to reduce or eliminate incidents of false fire alarms and to encourage alarm users and businesses to properly maintain and operate their alarm systems. After five false alarms within a calendar year, penalties will be $100 for the first offense, with an increase for each subsequent offense up to $500. This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Item 13 is reserved for new business. We have one item this morning?
Yes, Mr. President. This comes to us from the Police Department. This is a resolution authorizing an application acceptance of the Bureau of Justice Assistance Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program, also known as the BVP Program, which is a 50/50 match with the Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program to purchase 16 replacement bulletproof vests and seven new hire bulletproof vests. The city's portion of the funding is $11,419.50, and again, that's a 50/50 match, so in order to expedite these bulletproof vest purchases, I would ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business today, please.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Alright, we'll get to Item 14, which is Department Reports, Committees, and Boards. Do we have any of those this morning? I see our friend Craig Scott from the library here this morning, and he's also involved with, I can't list all of them, Craig, Boad and anything to do with helping people, Craig Scott's involved in it.
He's also Santa Claus.
And he's also Santa Claus.
I have been that. I've been to the library before. So Craig Scott, Director of the Gadsden Public Library. So I'm here today to introduce to you our current intern from Jacksonville State School of Social Work, Madeline Peavy. Madeline?
Hi, Madeline. Good morning.
So Madeline, Madeline has been with us since August, and as a part of her bachelor's degree, she is required to have an internship, and she asked at the library, and we gladly accepted her. She's done a marvelous job for us. Now, I've said this many, many times before, anybody is welcome through the library door as long as they behave. So, my staff has been trained well, but on certain issues, we need a social worker, and that's where Madeline steps in.
Oh, wow.
So she has been with us for, and the internship is for 450 hours. That's a bunch of hours.
Yeah.
So she's about to graduate. This is her last requirement. So assuming she turns in what I've asked for, right, then in December, she'll be graduating, and she's already told me she's going on for her master's this coming spring. So we wish her the best of luck on that.
Well, that's great. Well, welcome, and thank you for all the work you've done for us.
Thank you.
By the way, part of her requirement is to attend and listen to all you guys. She's going to attend the city council meeting.
Oh, gosh.
And here I was, feeling flattered that she just kind of wanted to come and hang out at this city council meeting.
One of the things I left out with Craig is Manna, you know, the Meals on Wheels. He's heavily involved in that organization, so I don't know if every library director does that, but if they don't, we're glad that ours does. So, thank you, Craig. Alright, any others? I don't think I see any others this morning, so we'll go to Agenda Item 15, which is Citizen Request to Speak. First is Kathy Vance, Talk About Dogs Disturbing the Peace and Noise. And Ms. Vance, as is our custom, if you'll give us your, of course, your name and then your home address, please.
Kathy Vance.
Oh, I'm sorry. There we go. Yeah.
Kathy Vance, born here, probably will take my last breath here, 50 Alpine View.
Thank you.
Okay.
Alright.
Ready?
Yes, ma'am.
I think you get the gist of what I'm going to talk about.
Yes, ma'am.
That wasn't quite loud enough, but, okay. I don't keep up with a lot of social media, but I'm aware of what's going on. Every week, if not every day, someone is posting about a barking dog problem, usually posted anonymously. This has been a longtime problem. I've dealt with attacks by a pit bull three times. Dogs barking for most of a weekend, and generally barking hours for all day long. About two weeks ago, a neighbor put a cage with a large Doberman who, for several days, barked, howled, whined, cried continuously. It's about 20 feet from my bedroom, bathroom, den, kitchen, laundry porch, where I stay, and just a few feet from my shop. I've had no peace in my home, can't go in the yard, go on my porch, or basically be in my home. It's the holiday season when people come over, and plans have been canceled for company. I text the dog's owner several times, made him aware of the disturbance, very friendly. I even told him I had to leave my home on two days to get some peace. He said that was fine. Another time, he wanted to know how I got a number, an invasion of his privacy. I told him he gave it to me when he had a lawn service. I've lived here for over 50 years, took me a long time to pay for it, and now my peace is shattered. If a person doesn't have peace, nothing goes well, driving, crazy drivers, working relationship. Gadsden has improved greatly, the river especially, a load, the new building sidewalks and more, but in addition to being the city of champions, we need to be known as the city of peace. I was born here in Gadsden and probably will see my last days here. I've talked with a very nice lady at Animal Control who desperately wanted to help me, and said she had many calls from people, but as long as the hours of 10:00 at night to 8:00 in the morning are in the Unicode to keep a dog quiet, she could do nothing other than send someone to check on the dog. I've also talked with a man whose father-in-law is dying, mothers with new babies, caregivers of children and adults, they all need peace and quiet. Most people are afraid to speak out, afraid of retribution, so as citizens, they need your help. So do I. I'm asking the council to take out from the Unicode the times of 10:00 at night and 8:00 in the morning that a dog should be quiet. What about people who do shift work and need to sleep during the day? And all the hospital workers and the first responders who work all kinds of hours? And people who just want to rest, or read a book during the day, or have company? If people have pets, they need to take care of them 24/7 and not potentially damage others. There are a lot of day sleepers, or who try to be. A dog's bark is between 80 and 113 decibels. It can be loud enough to cause hearing damage, with noise louder than 85 decibels being a risk, possibly causing temporary or permanent hearing loss and tinnitus. The World Health Organization states the intrusive sound of a barking dog is a potential stressor that can result in increased blood pressure, anxiety, hypertension, increased heart rate, ischemic heart disease, headaches, nausea, changes in blood flow, electrolyte imbalance, and gastrointestinal problems. Researchers at John Hopkins University have found that dog barking interferes with healing and recovery. The high levels of barking increases the risk of heart attack by 50% for men and 75% for women. The British Journal of Medicine, by allowing a dog to bark, affects judgment coordination, slows reaction time, and dramatically increases death. Violence and resentment is a side effect of exposing people to chronic barking. I'm desperate for help after suffering through my experiences with dogs the last several years. A lot of people are, not just me. I've had pets. In fact, I would rather have been with my dachshunds than most people that I know. And I've raised drug and narcotic dogs for the government for several years, so I care greatly about dogs. I periodically, at that time, checked with my neighbors to see if they were being bothered, and most did not even know I had dogs. No one was bothered. I also read in my studies that it is illegal to drug a dog to stop it from barking, and would likely be considered in the state of Alabama a criminal offense. I've done a huge amounts of research, lot more than I wanted to, but again, people must take care of their animals and not go off and let them bark all day, all night, or maybe all weekend going to a ballgame. Please take the 10:00 at night to 8:00 in the morning out of the Unicode. That's all I'm asking. I have extreme health problems, which I'll share with you privately, but not publicly, and this is just about to kill me. I've copied parts of a Gadsden Unicode that has the hours from 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM pertaining to dogs and the noise ordinance. May I approach y'all and give y'all those, I mean, you probably know them, but I just copied those two things for you to have.
You can hand them to Ms. Nelson here, the city clerk, and she'll pass them out.
I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have. I'll do my best.
Alright, well, we appreciate your coming and your comments, and we'll certainly, I'm sure we'll review the information here and move forward with it. We would need to obviously get with our city attorney about any kind of possibility of addressing the ordinance change and things like that, but I don't think this is an isolated problem, and we appreciate you speaking, and we'll work as diligently as we can to address the issue.
Well, I appreciate y'all letting me come, because Gadsden's always been good to hear citizens. I appreciate that, but I don't know how those hours got in there, because we have so many day sleepers in this area. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
And, Mr. President, I can say it's certainly, despite our speaker today not being active on social media, as the kids say, I would like to sign up for your newsletter and subscribe to your podcast, because this is a major issue in my neighborhood as well.
Is it really?
And I'm telling you, it's interesting. I just listened to a podcast recently about noise pollution and the impact that it can have on the health impacts that were referenced by the speaker, and I'm telling you, it's a form of torture. It literally is a form of torture that has been used throughout history to drive people mad, and I have a very similar situation personally in my neighborhood with an animal that is directly outside of my bedroom, and there are times when that animal is left out the entire weekend, all night, all day, and when I say it never stops but to take a breath from barking, I mean for 10, 12, 16 hours at a time, nonstop, and it is a real issue. I don't know, I would ask the city attorney, I mean, is that a civil matter that you could bring before in a private court against your neighbor for, I mean?
Well, I mean, you can bring a nuisance case against, it can't be a private.
Well, I mean, I'm literally to that point personally. I mean, it's that bad in my neighborhood downtown, so I can certainly relate with the speaker, and if, obviously, the biggest challenge is, where do we get the manpower to go, you know, and enforce that? But it is a challenge that we have to address, and I agree with the speaker that it's a real issue that is affecting people's quality of life and their physical health and well-being.
Yeah, I would maybe suggest that the Public Safety Committee, which is a subcommittee of the council, is that you?
Yeah, it is.
And I can't remember if I'm on that committee or not. I think I might be the member.
I believe it's myself and Councilman Smith.
Councilman Smith?
Yeah.
On the public safety?
And Chris. And Councilman Robinson.
Chris, okay, that's right. Councilman Robinson. I would suggest y'all convene a meeting, and we'll let you know, Ms. Vance, when that meeting's, it's open to the public, obviously, any of these subcommitments. Ma'am?
Sure.
You can, since he's been, since he kind of addressed you, I'll allow you to address him.
I just don't know how those hours should be in there that says that people can only be quiet at night, and the dogs aren't quiet at night anyway, but if you do call or ask for help, or just, you know, the last couple of years, I've talked with a lot of people, but day sleepers, you know, they need to rest during the day. Sometimes people just want to sit down, prop their feet up, you know, read a book, but-
Well, I can say this, when the ordinance was drafted, I mean, you're talking about day sleepers, but then you're talking about people mowing their yard, you're talking about construction crews, you're talking about all sorts of other things that make noise louder than dogs. And so, you know, that is not really a valid argument during the day with day sleepers, because you're going to have other activity during the day that's going to be loud. You following?
I follow you.
Now, as far as the dogs, so we have a meeting here with the Public Service-
Public Safety.
Public Safety. I mean, everything can be discussed at that point, and I doubt, because, you know, there's going to be, there's other, I mean, there's, you know, other people's going to have different views on this, and so that's a good committee to have to flesh these things out.
Well, and I certainly-
You've been to these meetings before.
Probably.
You have.
But my only concern is when someone mows the yard, you know about how long it's going to take and it's going to stop. If you have ever dealt with a dog that does 48 hours, I don't know how they do it. That's different, but I can understand people mowing, blowing leaves, you know, building those types of things.
Well, I certainly intend to call a Public Safety Committee meeting, and you'll be made aware of it, and we'll roll our sleeves up on this for sure, because again, I will just say this, to the city attorney's point, when referencing the Uniform Code, there's a reason why it's called the Uniform Code. This isn't something unique to Gadsden. Most of this language is somewhat boilerplate, and it's used in municipalities all over the country, so, but every municipality is different and deal with certain situations differently, and that's what the Public Safety Committee's for, is for us to dig in and try to address those specific issues in our community, and that's what we'll do, and we'll make sure that you're aware of that meeting.
Yeah, it'll be duly advertised, as the city clerk's office advertises all of our meetings, all public meetings, but I'll make sure that, you know, Ms. Vance and I are friends and church member friends, and I've got your number, so I'll share it with Councilman Wilson, if that's okay.
And pardon the pun, but you have a sympathetic ear in me.
Alright, thank you. Thanks for coming. Alright, our next speaker is our good friend, Mayor Buster Porch. He's going to update us on the locations of Thanksgiving dinners.
Oh, good morning, ladies and council. President Back, thank you for letting me give this update.
Sure.
But before I do, I would actually just remind that Pastor Simmons wanted me to acknowledge my sister Annie, she was the commander of the kitchen. Nobody touched her meals until she gave the okay. Her husband, Ray, was the commander of the beans. Nobody touched his beans until they was okay with him. They're both looking down on us, and I'm quite sure they're happy at this day, because when we got this notice that there would be no more Thanksgiving meal at the vineyard, Pastor Simmons said, no, this cannot happen. So we got together, he was meeting there every Saturday with pastors of churches, and the last time mentioned here, I think he was here two weeks ago, and he mentioned there was 12 sites. Well, we have 13 at this point. And also, this was a total family affair. I think my sister Gloria Hope Marbury and Pastor Simmons came up with this idea 28 years ago. I have been the music entertainer for the last 10, 12 years, whatever, since our return. But, you know, as we know, there's not going to be this huge citywide Thanksgiving meal at the vineyard. 28 years this is going on. Last year, 10,996 meals- Last year, 10,996 meals in one day, and these was all, this was all done through the volunteers. There's a multitude of volunteers. We started on Monday cleaning out the place and just getting it all together, but it's far too many, far too many, too many volunteers to acknowledge, but I just want to take this time to give thanks to every volunteer through this last, this 28 years, and also this 28 years, 28 years. How many volunteers is totally unknown, but I appreciate it, and just thinking of volunteers, as you know, I have 23 years of elected office in Illinois, and I found out that there's two, two types of volunteers, and you as Councilman, if you're running out of volunteers to do the things that you want done in your district, there's two types that I'm concerned with. There's one who volunteer for the sake of volunteers. There's an addiction, that's like me. I volunteer for the sake of volunteers. That second type that I know of is the type that must, that must be asked. So if you need volunteers, get the one that's addicted, but there's more out there that need to be asked, so ask them. It'll help you in your district. Out of the 13 sites, I want to give praise to Councilman, former Councilman Worthy. He had, he always have his on a Saturday before Thanksgiving. He had his this past Saturday at the Carver Community Center, and I understand there was in excess of 500 that he served.
Wow.
That's the goal that Pastor Simmons set forth for all these sites, so we'll find out as we go how many each site are served. Tomorrow, there's two sites. In Mount Pereira Baptist Church, that's 408 North Ninth Street, they'll be serving from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The second site tomorrow is the Universal Worship Center that's at 1608 Fillmore Avenue. They'll be serving from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Thanksgiving Day, of course, there's New Liberty Christian Church at New Destiny, I'm sorry, 201 Goldenrod, Councilman Smith. They'll be serving from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Also, the Freedom Center, 1601 West Meagan Boulevard, be serving from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Now, we found out there's two Damascus Baptist Church. First one is 1709 Barnes Avenue. They'll be serving from 10:30 a.m. to noon. This one was mentioned before, but the one that was not mentioned before is the Damascus Baptist Church at 547 Tyler Street. They'll be serving from noon to 2:00 p.m. From the Salvation Army, 114 North Eleventh Street will be serving from noon to 3:00 p.m. And of course, the new Tabernacle Baptist, a praise, they'll be serving from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at 924 East Broad Street, causes Pastor Simmons. The Dynamic Outreach Ministry, 2101 Broadway Avenue, be serving from noon to 2:00 p.m. The Abundant Life Church at 323 South 12th Street will be serving from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. First Baptist Church of Gadsden, 103 North Cottage Street, that's in Glencoe, will be serving from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And finally, Friendship Baptist Church at 709 Third Avenue Northwest, this is an attala. They'll be serving from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. One thing that Pastor Simmons wanted to do was to not just have it in one central location, but to have it throughout the city, north, south, east, and west. This has been accomplished, so, and I still, I praise, I praise, and I praise volunteers. Without volunteers, this would not be possible. I thank you very much for giving me the opportunity. Thank you very.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Porch, and we appreciate all your help and all of your volunteerism over these years, and the folks that you mentioned are to be commended for what they've done for the last 28 years, and I think for the future 28 years. I think they've started something that's going to be bigger, and I know Craig Scott's been driving, helped drive that boat for many years. Craig, thank you for all of your years of volunteerism and helping to head up the community Thanksgiving. What a major undertaking, and so, thank you so much, and I'll give you a Go Green. That's in honor of Dr. Underwood, Dr. Clarence Underwood, so we share a friendship with Dr. Underwood, Craig and I do. What a great guy. All right, well, that concludes our citizen request to speak. We're now at the remarks by the mayor and council. Is there anyone from the mayor's office that would, has anything they need to convey this morning? No? All right, well, then we will start with, I guess, Councilwoman Latham in District One.
Thank you, President Beck. First of all, I would just like to commend the Puma soccer team and their leaders, leader, Mr. Rigby. He was a former student of mine and saw some parents and their children with that group that I've taught in the past, so we want to say congratulations to them. We do have a serious problems with the barking of dogs, and I'm glad to, I would like to be at that meeting as well because we get calls about that situation, so it is something that I think we are trying to address, and hopefully we can come up with a solution that is well for all. I commend the work that's being done to keep the unity Thanksgiving going, and hopefully all of that will be a success and meet the needs of those who need it most. In my, in ending my remarks, I do want to say I had an awesome time last week sharing with my colleagues as much as we possibly could with the National NLC Summit, 2025 Summit. One thing that I will take away, that I took away from the meeting with everything that is going on in our world today is the need for bipartisanship and the need for us to work together in unity, so I think I'm grateful for the relationship, the workmanship that we have as a city council in trying to solve issues as we do. So I would just, that was one thing that I got, the main thing that I got, we're really trying to solve problems because there are people who are really dealing with issues, and we cannot afford to be divided at this time, but we must work together for a better quality of life for all. So enjoyed the National League of Cities Conference, and I would just like to wish all a very happy Thanksgiving and that we would really take the opportunity to just rest, to reflect, and to be thankful. Thanksgiving is not something I personally do once a year, but I'm grateful every day for everything that God has blessed me with, so I just want to wish all a happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy your family, enjoy your friends, and take a moment to just, as they say, what every day on the view, take a minute to enjoy the view. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Smith?
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. I need to read this morning. I also want to congratulate the soccer team, their coaches, all the players and parents, and then I heard them say these kids were academically excellent, and that's even better even to hear that with all that they're doing on the field, so congratulations to all of them as well. Want to give, yeah, big thanks to the city, you know, we're using taxpayer dollars to travel to the NLC and just so much to glean, and we always come back with so much information, how we can make our city better, safer, and a cleaner place to live, so we want to thank the city of Gadsden for allowing us to be able to do that. I don't take that for granted. It's Thanksgiving week, and we do want to commend the Thanksgiving Community Committee for 27 years of serving here and making sure people didn't have to go hungry on Thanksgiving, and I also want to thank you all for challenging the churches. The day you came in here and made us aware that you're not feeding, you know, it was a challenge to the churches, and with a short window like that, that was amazing. I feel like that was just the Lord's doing to accept that challenge, and with Pastor Simmons, as the mayor just told us, organizing and rallying everybody together. We can't do 11,000 this year, but by my calculations, without the added church he told us about, we should be feeding about 6,000 people if everybody do what they're committed to doing, so that is a blessing, and we thank you for challenging us, challenging us to be able to do that and to be able to love on the people, which is, I think, was a part of the goal as well, so we're looking forward to that. Praying that everybody will have a safe and a happy Thanksgiving on this week that's coming up. We are giving out food this morning at our church with our monthly food distribution, also added turkeys to that. If there's any left, I passed by there, and the line was wrapped around the building, of course. Thank the mayor and the city, Chief Jaggers, for the police that we had on site this morning while they're doing food distribution. And also want to thank President Beck, because I didn't know he was driving that truck to Birmingham, you know, to make pickups, to bring food back to the city for another program that we're a part of with their church feeding the children in the schools, so it's a lot going behind the scenes that you don't even see sometimes, so I wanted to make sure I mention him on this morning as well. So we're excited about Thanksgiving Day, and again, as Mayor Porch said, all the volunteers who have just stood up and risen to the occasion and excited about helping somebody else, doing it early enough where we can spend time with our own families, so thank you, thank you, thank you. I want to say to Ms. Vance, thank you so much for the thorough report this morning. It was so thorough. I always try to put myself in that position, what if that were me? What if that were my home? What if that were me trying to rest, trying to sleep? So we do hear you, and, you know, in my opinion, what you presented today is enough to get something done, just hearing that. You got to hear that every single day and every single week, so as Councilman Wilson said, there will be a meeting called where we'll sit down and discuss it. Your coming here today was not in vain, so want to make sure I mention that to you. I think that's about all I have listed to Pastor Simmons. We appreciate him and his leadership for all that, you know, he did the 28 years ago, and now that it's come full circle, making sure that this don't drop. Again, thank you to 211. Please utilize 211. It's going to be so important for us next year to help us to gauge what we did and how we can do it better. The Success Center and all of the donors and all the volunteers, just want to thank everyone. Thank you to the mayor and the council. Thank you, President Beck. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for the kind words also, personal words. Councilman Wilson?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I don't have much to say other than thank you to all those involved in the community Thanksgiving of the last 28 years and all the churches that have picked that torch up and moved forward. I know that we'll rise as a community to meet that need, and in the interest of it being Iron Bowl Week, I'll obviously say War Eagle and do my annual traditional list of things, little-known facts about Alabama fans. Number one, Alabama fans are not afraid to eat the last Little Debbie Christmas tree cake out of the package. They park all of their cars on the sidewalks. Alabama fans actually invented spam emails. Alabama fans are against Christmas presents in general. Alabama fans do not yield the left lane on the interstate to faster traffic. Alabama fans do not return their carts at the grocery store. They're the ones who leave them in the parking lot. Alabama fans stand up as soon as the plane lands on every flight, regardless of where they're sitting on the plane. All Alabama fans stand right outside of the entrance to the restaurant to congregate with their family right after the meal's over, so nobody can get in and out of the restaurant, and finally, Alabama fans let their dogs bark all day and all night. That's all I have, Mr. President. War Eagle.
Councilwoman Monatry, you always get the distinct pleasure of following Councilman Wilson.
I'll practice doing better in the new year.
Maybe we need to swap chairs with Councilman Robinson. Maybe y'all need to swap.
I just want to make mention of the Gadsden Christmas Parade will be on Friday, December the 5th. It will start at 5:30 on Broad Street, and there will be much entertainment, and Councilman Wilson has upped his budget for candy, so any children out there, I will say you will be well taken care of on the city council float.
Just get on the side of the Councilman Wilson's office.
Happy Thanksgiving and travel safe.
Thank you. Councilman Robinson?
Thank you, Councilman President Beck. I just don't want to echo, I love saying echo there, I want to echo our time in Salt Lake City. I always have a great time hanging out with you guys and getting to know y'all better and the relationships we gained there. And just happy Thanksgiving to everybody. It's officially the Christmas season. You can put your tree up now, if you haven't already. If you haven't already, you can now. But yeah, and we have a Christmas, you probably have the notes, Councilman Beck, the Christmas tree lighting is Wednesday, right? Wednesday afternoon. Is it 6:00 or 6:30? Because I have read two different times, and I don't know. Michael, do you know that? Is it a 6:30 light, 6 o'clock get there? Because I mean, on social media, on social media, we have, I've read two different times in different places, and people have asked me, and I'm like, I don't know what that means, get there at 6:00, and they light it at 6:30. I don't know if you get there at 6:00 and it's already lit because they light it at 6:00, so we need to...
Let's just plan on getting there at 6:00. Frosties will be open.
6:00, and we'll light it at 6:30, so.
I think that's right.
That's at Riverside Park. We'll look into that. We'll just say 6:30 if you get there at 6:15 and it's already lit, and we'll get you next year.
I feel like my plan's better.
It would be better. Iron Bowl Weekend, Roll Tide, may the best team win. Kind of look like if one way or the other, I might come out on the good, you know, if you guys were to beat us, we might get rid of our coach and get somebody better, and if we win, we win. We keep going, so kind of look at it that way. I'm, you know, happy either way possibly. I don't know how you other Roll Tiders feel about that. That's kind of where I'm at these days. I have one last thing. Oh, yeah, Christmas at the Falls will be open this weekend. It's officially Christmas season. Go look at the Christmas lights. I know we've been open the last couple of weeks, and we've had good crowds up there, but I feel like this weekend's good weather. We're going to have a, it's going to get a little colder, it's going to feel like Christmas time, so I think that's going to be awesome. And then our parade is next Friday night, so Merry Christmas, Happy Thanksgiving, Roll Tide.
All right.
And I don't do any of those things, other than eat the last Debbie snack cake.
Well, I did forget one, Mr. President. Alabama fans are also against throwing candy at the Christmas parade.
There's ones. All right, y'all, we've, I'll borrow Councilman Smith's phrase, we've had a good day of government here at City Hall. I want to chime in on the Puma team, 12 and under, state champions. That's very exciting for those young men, and I had mentioned earlier, Coach Rigby, Rudy Rigby, and our son Allen played basketball in middle school and high school together, and what an outstanding, he was an outstanding young man back then, great parents and just a great kid, and turned out to be a wonderful adult working with our young people in the city of Gadsden, so very proud for Rudy and for all of his players. Mayor Porch, thank you again for bringing the report on the community Thanksgiving. Look forward to you coming back, you and Pastor Simmons or whoever needs to come back to give us an after, as our mayor likes to say, that, what is it, after action review, the AAR? So we look forward to hearing the positive reports from what's going to happen on this week of Thanksgiving. I too want to thank citizens for letting us go to the National League of Cities Annual Conference this year, was in Salt Lake City, Utah. 3,400 local elected officials gathered for three days of work sessions and speaker... local elected officials gathered for three days of work sessions and speakers. It's very educational. You find that larger cities, small cities, and all in between, towns and townships, we all have the same problems. We all have the same challenges. And it's just really helpful to gather together to, to talk about how do we attack those problems and how do we solve those problems, whether it's funding or barking dogs or whatever the issues are. Every city has the exact same problems. And so it's, it's very educational. One of the, there's numerous sessions that you get to choose to go. And we, a few of us attended one that Tim Shriver of the Kennedy family has headed up, he's got a new program. It's called, what, the Dignity Initiative or Dignity. And it's, it's a real simple premise. It's treat everyone with dignity. I kind of liken it to what the scripture says, is to treat people the way you want to be treated. And so it's, it's a movement going across the country. It's a needed movement on the federal, state, and local level that we treat each other with dignity, especially those that might have an opposite opinion of yourself or of myself. And it, Councilwoman Latham spoke to it just a little bit about bipartisanship. I hope that this council is, is showing that in the three years that we've been together, how we approach city issues. I know we get up here at this time of the morning, and it may look like we're all just in lockstep and everything's just, you know, we never disagree. We all have our own opinions, and we all have varying thoughts of how things should be done. And those are discussed and worked out prior to these meetings in the work session or in some of the subcommittee meetings. But, but we care for one another. We care for each other's districts and the citizens that live there. And, and we vote our conscience. But we also get along with each other and respect our differences. We're all after the same thing, to make Gaston a better city for, not only for today, but for the future. And the mayor's office brings great leadership in that regard. Our city's cleaner. That's one thing we noticed about Salt Lake, Salt Lake City. What a clean city. I didn't see a cigarette, but I didn't see a wrapper. I didn't see a Coke can. It was just, it's a very clean city. And I, and our city is, is much better in that direction than we've probably ever been. And it's due in part to the leadership coming out of the administration. And then the council supports all of that. So it just makes me even want, it makes us want to have an even cleaner city. So things like that are the things that you kind of learn from going to these meetings. Also want to, First Baptist Gaston is having a holiday box giveaway this morning. And hopefully, I think we're giving away 150 boxes. And hopefully those go to the right people and get to the homes that are in need of food. And I appreciate Pastor Matt Alexander's leadership in, in doing that and working with all of our good friend Marie Johnson, the executive director of the Etowah Food Bank. Councilman Smith alluded to me driving the truck. We, the city of Gaston, through our community development block grant funds, three years ago purchased a 16-foot box truck with a lift on the back of it. And we gave that box truck to the Etowah Food Bank. It's a great use of, of public money for the public good. It not only serves the citizens of Gaston, but every church in Etowah County and every organization that goes to the Etowah, I mean, to the Birmingham Food Bank or the Central Alabama Food Bank in Birmingham is where we go to get the food. And it saves so much money to have that truck. All we ask is that the people that are getting the orders put gas back in the truck. The truck's always on full. When you come back, you ask the organization to fill it up. And so it's, it's been a, really a big help because a lot of times they have to rent trucks. It's $300, $400 to do that. And that's $300, $400 that could be going to food for people that are in food insecure situations. That was going toward truck rental. Now that's going toward food. So it's an honor and a privilege to get to be one of the four drivers that are going back and forth to Birmingham. There is so much good going on in our community, not only in the city, but in the whole county of people looking out for their neighbors and treating others the way that they would like to be treated if they were in that position. Councilman Smith said in regard to the noise situation that, you know, he always tries to put himself in that person's place. Well, that's what we all, that's that dignity program is to put yourself in the other person's place. How would you like to be treated? How would you like to be spoken to? And it's just, it's a pretty simple premise. And if we all could wear that hat a little bit better, myself included, I think we all have a, have a better, better city and a better community. Last but not least, it's Thanksgiving. We wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving this week. Please look out for your neighbors. If you've got an elderly neighbor, somebody you know that's by themselves, check in on them. Make sure everything's going okay over there. Look for, if a curtain hadn't been open, and you know it usually is. So kind of be aware of the goings on in your neighborhood. Christmas tree lighting is this Wednesday, 6:30 at Riverside Park. Y'all, we have the state's tallest Christmas tree. Thanks in fact to our administration for making sure we have the state's tallest Christmas tree. And that's going to be real exciting. Bumper cars at our ice skating rink. I was sharing some of this with people that I met in Salt Lake City. They couldn't believe that Gaston, Alabama has an ice skating rink. And so, and then I had to throw in about the tallest Christmas tree. And then Nakalula Falls with over 2 million lights. That is just a wonderland to go up there. If you've never been, please go. And please walk around and take the train. And it's just like, I mean, it's just, talk about a stress or a de-stresser, that's the place to go. It's just a beautiful place. Our city employees do an unbelievable job of transforming that into a real Hallmark movie set, basically. It's just a beautiful place. And so, but most of all, just look out for each other. Look out for your fellow citizens. And we'll all make Gaston even a better place than it is. Well, that's all that we have this morning. And we'll, we'll see you back here.
If I could add just one thing to-
You can, you got another list?
Well, no, but I was going to say something that you, you mentioned, Mr. Shriver, and the Dignity Initiative.
Oh, yeah.
I did find it interesting about midway through that presentation. I'm not sure you may have been in the restroom, but he said that does not apply to Alabama fans on the week of the Iron Bowl. That's all.
I think I did see that. I did hear that.
I thought you might have been in the restroom.
Oh, well, I could have been powdering my nose.
That was interesting.
All right, y'all. We've had a good time. Thank you. Have a good week. We are adjourned.